Except for executive session. That is defined by the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Harty Public Meeting affords members of the public to submit written written statements or make brief comments during the public comment part of the meeting. However, persons in attendance are not allowed to act in an unreasonable manner that alarm or disrupts another and provokes a breach of peace. This could include making loud or unusual noise, clapping, speaking out, or interrupting during the city council meeting. One may not impeach the performance of official duties. If any person acts in disorderly manner at a public meeting and persists after being warned, the mayor as the chairman can order the person to withdraw or be removed from the meeting. If the person refuses, they can be removed and fined under the Illinois statute 620 I O C S one slash four zero dash two five disorderly conduct. Disorderly conduct at a public meeting in Illinois involves any unreasonable behavior that disrupts others or disrupts the meeting, and it is subject to removal and penalties if it persists after a warning is given. This also includes city employees and council members. Harvey Police officers are present at public city council meetings to assist the chairman and preserve the order. If any person is ordered to withdraw or leave the meeting by the mayor selects chairman and refuses, that person can be cited and criminally charged with disorderly conduct. The Harvey Police Department can escort the person out of the building. If the person refuses to leave and physically resists the Harvey Police Department, that person can be charged with resisting arrest. Under Illinois law, resisting arrest is defined as knowingly resisting or obstructing the performance by one known to the person to be a peace officer, firefighter, correctional institutional employee of any authorized act within his or her official capacity. This constitutes a Class Eight misdemeanor, 720 L I O C S five slash three one dash one, resisting or obstructing a peace officer, firefighter, or correctional institution employee. This statute requires that the act of resistance must involve some physical act that imposes an obstacle, demand, hinder, interrupt, prevent, or delay the performance of officer duties. Examples include struggling, wrestling, going left, or physically aiding a third party to avoid arrest. Illinois law explicitly states that a person is not authorized to use force to resist arrest by a known peace officer even if the arrest is believed to be or is in fact unlawful. Resistance of even an unlawful arrest by a known officer is a violation of state statute and has been put over supporters 220 I A. So, a few more housekeeping orders. This sign is actually posted outside on the doors. Well, someone like greet this or take a picture of it. As well as prior to the end of the meeting, all residents and attendees and guests will be allowed to leave the meeting first. City employees, everyone that sits up here in the front room not leaving until after all the city, uh, the residents and attendees and guests have left the building. So I'll make sure that my officers let you guys know once the meeting is over, we're gonna allow you guys to all exit quietly officially, and then we'll go ahead and make sure we allow all the persons and everyone else in our staff to leave. Okay? Thank you.
Try to figure out number five or six. We will move to number seven. Approval of the state's August 26, 2024. We had a motion by the third, second by the first. Um, it's ready to debate.
I guess we're.
Sure. The glasses. Second word.
I just motioned to table, um, approval of the minutes for August 26, 2024 to September the 23rd, our next city council meeting so that we can identify the reasons for recess. So then the minutes.
Second. Motion, um, and second to table the approval of minutes until September the 21st, 2024. Yeah, because there's already a motion. Sorry, there's already a motion to set on the floor. So when you take a vote on that, if it does not pass, then we can move to the alternate motion, um, um, on which I.
Thank you.
So we will first make a, I have a motion by the second and a second by the first to approve the minutes for August 26, 2024. You can go ahead and cast your votes.
That's not right.
Yes. Next one, fail. So everybody go to the alternate, which is to table the, um, approval of minutes to September 23rd, 2024. So that motion is improper. Those motions by the second and the person and, um, second by the fourth. Motion by the second and second by the fourth. Okay? And you can cast your votes. Please. So that motion carries. Now he tabled it to the 23rd, 2024. Next item on the agenda. Share. Um, is the approval of bills for payment, um, dated August 26, 2024. And a motion by the third and second by the sixth before we move forward. Do we have a recommendation from the chair of the finance committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, uh, we had a finance meeting and I started at six o'clock promptly, and we had the opportunity to discuss and move the bills to this board, um, August 26, 2024. Chair makes a recommendation for that five bills.
Okay, we can once again the motion by the third and the second by the sixth. There's no need to debate.
Yes, Mayor.
Chair of the finance system, second word.
Thank you. Uh, we asked, I personally asked the finance chair and Roger several questions, um, specifically, um, about the Antero group. What, you know, that there's a quarter three meetings tomorrow, so I wanted him to further expand on some details of what exactly the Antero group has completed thus far. And he told me, or he reverted back to me, that I needed to speak with the comptroller who was present and herself here, and, um, I tried a four or fifth time around asking the chairman a variety of questions related, the chairman, uh, the finance committee, a variety of questions. And he unfortunately has no sound and answer. Um, so looking to see, just as you gave a recommendation beforehand, what recommendation could you give me, all the chairman, on how I could?
This is not a question and answer. This is just a debate of whether you want to support the motion or not. That's all it is. So we return your statement as a statement that is not in favor of, um.
Well, then, more so that you said this is a time for debate.
This is a time for debate.
So the debate is, is that the finance chair can't answer any questions regarding the financial state.
So is your position that you do not want to support the motion?
Right, I'll do that in my vote.
Okay. Um, is there a other debate? Here it is. Once again, the motion by the third, second by the sixth. You can go ahead and cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the approval of bills for payment, September 29, 2024. There's a motion by the third and the second by the sixth before continuing. Is there a recommendation by the finance chair?
Yes, Mayor. The recommendation from the finance chair is to modify bills. We calls, uh, we had an opportunity to discuss all the bills, and there was nothing, um, in particular that stood out. Everything aimed to be paid, so make a recommendation for those.
If you want to get this motion by the third and the second by the sixth, is there any debate? Here it is. You can cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is number nine, approval of ordinances for residents of the city of Harvard. Nine B one, under new business, is a motion to approve a release settlement agreement between Brandon Collinmore and the city of Harvard. This motion authorizes the release settlement agreement between Brandon Collinmore and the city of Harvard lawsuit case number two zero two three, F three two three. There's a motion by the third and the second by the sixth. There's no need to debate on the motion. Here it is. You can cast your vote. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is, um, public comment. Public comment is encouraged and appreciated. It's the opportunity for the public to address the city council on agenda items and any other city-related business. In order to accomplish all business on the agenda, obviously, it's on the agenda. Have you respectful everyone's time? Council leaders will not engage in dialogue with individual members of the ordinance, and no immediate action will be taken on any public comment issue. When your name is called, please proceed to the podium and state your name and address. Please leverage your comments to three minutes. No speaker may donate his or her time to another speaker. Comments shall be courteous and respectful at all times. No person may use public comment for the purposes of campaign or advertisement. This is not the question and answer time. The council cannot engage in conversation with other questions and concerns by operations should be addressed with city staff during regular business hours. So our first person for public comment is Ryan Subloski, followed by Patricia Lewis. I'm just going to go through our time ready to proceed back to Mrs. Subloski.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan Subloski. I'm a Harvard resident and director of the Harvard Historical Society. Tonight, I want to talk to you about a huge magic trick that's happening right before our very eyes as a city. Have you noticed the huge piles of brick papers that were dug up from the 154th Street project and shipped off by the truckloads in the past few weeks? Of course, I'm against public projects as long as they're vetted properly by the public, but let's do the math on this. I spoke with a salvage expert, and he estimates that there were about thirty-five thousand or so of these bricks excavated. They're worth about fifteen dollars each. That means that approximately a half a million dollars' worth of historic brick papers have disappeared from downtown Harvey right in front of our eyes. This is the stuff of David Copperfield, the famous magician. He's the guy that made the statue that re-disappeared. These are not cheap concrete bricks you buy from Home Depot, mind you. These are Albion shale bricks made from unique shale formations in Albion, Illinois, in southern Illinois. Uh, they're from the early nineteen hundreds. They're irreplaceable, and they're part of Harvey's collective wealth. You can't buy new bricks made of such quality materials anymore. So my question is, where were they taken? Who bought them? Where are the proceeds of almost a half a million dollars? Add it to the rest of the list of public funds and resources not being reported on by this administration, I guess? This is crazy. And to think that Mr. Clark and his allies ran on cleaning up the corruption of Mayor Kellogg? It sounds like this administration is just as corrupt or worse than Kellogg's. We demand yet again to see all the receipts and invoices for how politicians are spending our money. You can keep fighting it, but the truth will come out eventually. Will you, for Alderman, city staff, police officers, including the ones that arrested me, firefighters, all the other folks that work for the city of Harvey? Will you go to jail for someone else's greed? Think about that. I should roll. I want to be on the side of transparency and truth. I can guarantee you that when the truth comes out, Mayor Clark and his allies won't think twice before throwing any of you under the bus. I hope you think long and hard before endangering yourself and your families further by covering up for these thieves. Do you have little children? Maybe you have a spouse that relies on your insurance from the city of Harvard? Think about that. You're gonna go to jail for them? They're not going to jail. So while you still have time, come and be on the side of the truth. This charade might seem like it'd last forever, but it won't. Thank you.
Followed by Jonathan Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Patricia Lewis. I was having one bad night due for a good morning. For the past year, I've been reaching out to the Alderman and spoken to the chief of police about some squats at 15944. Um, it's getting worse. They're dumping trash in people's yards. They're busting windows out. They have a dog that's attacking the neighborhood. We did call the police yesterday. They came out and said that they would have the, uh, dog control. People come pick the dog up today, and they will come board the house up. And no one came out to board the house up. The dog captured, did come out, and they said that they weren't allowed to go in the house. I know for a fact that she's been there putting stickers on this door and she's taking them off. But this is becoming a public nuisance, and it's becoming a safety issue in our, on our block because she have all type of people coming in and out all type of night, pulling on people's car doors and everything. The police has been called several times. Sometimes they show up, sometimes they don't. So me, as a resident and a high taxpayer, I would like some support, and I would like somebody to come out and board this house up and go tell me what I need to do to get this done because it's really becoming a lag issue for people in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Jonathan Johnson, followed by Zoe Lee.
Just broke the government to use all of the time. The intimidation tactics of having ten officers in a room with unarmed citizens is something that is very much so something that needs to be revisited. Um, standing around the room, uh, we go into a courthouse. We only see one vapor that actually, uh, is in that courtroom. Ten officers, they've been checked up. We know for sure these people don't have any weapons or anything that could hurt or harm anyone. I think they actually surround people and say, give their speeches or actually consider this space. Um, the finance chair did not answer any questions during the meeting. I don't know why he decided to tell a complicated story in reference to, um, saying that he, we discussed or things were talked about during the meeting. It wasn't discussed in fact. I don't even know if he really, uh, detailed anything. Doesn't even answer any questions that the citizens had. Instead, he directed all the attention to the mayor's office and told the citizens to email the mayor for questions. I mean, with their questions for answers. The lack of professional decorum. Uh, co-chair or whomever Ms. Smith role is on this committee, she walked clearly out of the meeting without the meeting being adjourned. Uh, she has a lack of professional decorum for the people that elected her into the seat. And not only that, the people that are actually here asking questions that she should answer. Again, I'll state that the citizens that are in this space are the bosses. You all are elected to serve. These people pay their salaries. These people are the ones that are actually the ones ensuring that the city can go on with their finances. And for someone to disregard them to that regard is very disrespectful, and it lacks a lot of professional decorum. I want to address the TK construction issue, not being the owner of Alex. We know for sure he is. We have documentation that proves that that person is the owner of that Alex store. I don't understand why we're lying about that. Um, and it's, it's just starting to get a little bit, like, a little murky, and a lot of gray areas are happening here. And unfortunately, to see automatic people that are operating to this capacity, it's a sad thing to see, uh, that we're fighting over a city that really need people that will operate with integrity and wanted to bring the city out of operating in the red into the black. Um, you need the people, and to keep shunning the people is, 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 is a counterproductive thing to push the people away, to act as though their voice does not matter, to act as though the people don't matter. It defeats the purpose of your seat. I mean, I don't know if everybody planned to be one term, or if people are just tired and they're going to run again. But the people that we're disrespecting are the people that's going to let you back in. So I, I hope that people go home and really think about it and really decides, really make a change in their minds to serve instead of be served. Thanks.
Next on the agenda is Zoe Lee, followed by Sheriff McGee.
Good evening. Um, I just want to say, uh, the city of Chicago and the state of Illinois are about to go to under, about to undergo the largest audit in American history. Uh, what you're doing to the community on Myrtle Ave is not just unethical, it's unlawful and a violation of the Lighted Property Act 1947 and 1949 and the Fifth Amendment. Chicago is already in a billion-dollar deficit, and my family's lawsuit will push it to three billion dollars. We're not accepting any shortcuts. My family is, is trying to sue the city of Chicago for illegal use of any domain. This doesn't include the separate lawsuit we have against Sabalock and Yellow Banana, who think they can open a government-run grocery store on my land without paying compensation. My team will support every Myrtle Ave resident who wishes to save by helping them file federal lawsuits, including those who are pressured to sign documents against their will. I've also heard that Harvard, Harvey is over a hundred and fifty million dollars a day. After we help this community and any other Harvard residents who wants to file federal lawsuits against this township, you don't have no choice but to hand it over to the residents because my Chicago will have to, have to hand, hand it over to me. Then all of it, the Justice Department, IRS Criminal Division, and federal authorities will be in medley because this is public corruption at its core. All this need to happen in every department to root out the cancerous elements that keep settling us out. In summary, the government is seizing private homes and property only to build government-run stores or housing. This is the biggest money laundering scheme since lately. It's tragic that we have so many black elected officials in the Democratic Party who have sold out their own communities to the highest white bill. This is, there is, this is nothing short of black home, black crime. By the way, 154 Compton, the village could be the perfect spot for that Palmland Park. I took a bus over here. Okay, I took a bus from 95th, my cousin picked me up. I counted like three thousand abandoned houses and then a church. Like, it's embarrassing that the city of Harvey look like this, and you do nothing about it. And it's, and the fact that you violating the open public easement act by saying people can't clap and all that stuff, like, you're embarrassing as a black man and as just a man, it's just, this is black. Just black, you're embarrassing. So I'm just letting you know, like, it's, this, if we're going to make history, Chicago is going to make history, Illinois is going to make history. This is election year. Congress not getting in, okay? And if this flip, if this state, after the flip ran on principle, it will. And you probably will be one of the people, like Walter Vernon and a whole bunch of other people, that will be going to jail for money laundering and arresting children. Stop selling out our community.
Next on the agenda is person is Sharon, Sharon McGee. Sharon, Sharon McGee, followed by Melvin King.
Hello, everyone. I am Sharon McGee. As the mayor, I do write this time. I do appreciate that. Um, I came up here to speak out last week because it seems like the citizens are always behind, you know, and, and in what we're saying. First and foremost, I just want to say that, Mayor, the way you spoke to Alderman Keith last week, it's no way that no black man should speak to another black man. And, and that's just person to person, that's black person to a black person. Alderman Keith is, is my Alderman, and he had some, some valid questions. We, we all have questions that just never get answered. I also want to ask, if you had had a chance to look at the tape, I think it's quite odd that you set up a video camera to record you violating our rights. Now, if one of us was to go and be a part of the numerous, um, lawsuits that the city has, and if we could, but you set this camera up and, and you violated my rights. When I went home, I researched it. The, the disruption started on that side, and then you lost control and then put us on the ground. Both, both times. Y'all were arguing on that side over there, and then you just one hundred percent lost control, and it is just indicative of you, yourself. I, you are not a good leader, sir. You campaign on, we are building a better Harvey. I want to ask you, where? When you riding down the streets, do anybody see a better Harvey? I don't. I see a lot of this. I see a lot of the same old, same old, but I don't see a better Harvey. The streets are still the same. The life is still, everything is still the same. But you're saying that you're building a better Harvey and I'm just telling you right now, sir, I don't see your vision. You got a big five-story building in the middle of downtown Harvey that's supposed to be low income. So low income, sir, we don't have no resources. We don't have nothing to give five stories of nobody. I ain't your target customer. All of my money goes outside of Harvey. I can't spend none of this good money here because there's nothing here for me to do with it. You said you were going to fix that. Here we are six, five years in and you not even finished the community hub. Once again, what is it? What is its intended purpose? You know what I'm talking about? I'm just saying, right now, you 100% have a voting confidence from me and I'm 100% going to get some love from me. You gotta do better. And then the thing is that I don't even think you can do better. Because this job has went all the way to your head and banging it out. Look at the tape, did you see it? You looking like a maniac. You threw it at me two times. My first time.
Minnesota Public Affairs, Melvin Lake King Jr.
Melvin Lake King Jr., 216, Kevinville, Ohio, Illinois. I'll be nice today. But my words are not going to be nice. This week, a neighbor who grew up on Michael Op, he shot a movie for Chicago PD, my alderman, he's in New York, I don't know if you fellas, he's not involved, but I'm going to say that. Their problem here, and by the way, I want to know who got the money from the city of Harvey when they're running movies? They were paying, did they pay city hall? Did they pay the mayor? Did they pay anybody? Did they pay any of the other persons? I just asked you a question. Maybe the treasurer, Michael, I don't know anything about that. Another thing to say, the treasurer, most important job in the city of Harvey now is the treasurer. Accountability to the citizens for money being spent is number one. A city can't be gone on promises, denials, insults, and taking large rules and using it as a whipping post against your own people. We have to be better than this. We have Kamala Harris running for office as president, Hussein, she's trying to do something good. We have other people running. And I'm not talking politics, I'm talking democracy. Harvey is not a democracy. It's not. Harvey is not a democracy. Many of the policemen here, ten, I count the ten policemen here, everybody's count of ten. You know what ten policemen can do for city workers to help them? You know how much money is spent for a golf on limousine park in the back there running gas 20.7? You know how much all of these vehicles around here are costing? You know to turn these vehicles in on at least get you some small car, start using the gas, and start using your mind to save money and get people employed to fix our streets? I'm extreme with the six ward and a lot of them like that. I'll drive as far as I can. I do all that damn on my own, but I think I'll do so much. Our dissuaded movie people believe that now movie teams can come to Harvey. That's some of the rules I have to come to Harvey. But if you want to continue to help them to come to Harvey and to do this here, I did all I could. I did politics for the city of Harvey. Right when you come to Harvey, shoot the movies. But I get politics for Harvey when Harvey doesn't care about me or their citizens. So we have to do differently. We have to spend money, right? We have to stop spending this money and wasting on things and let the treasurer, the treasurer should know by every dime we went. And every time you spend money every couple of months, the treasurer should be the one to give the report on what they spending and what they not spending each month. You don't have to wait for a year. You should do it immediately. And I'm telling you now, and I said I'm not in manner, I'm using five words. If you're not going to do the job, then get off the seat. If you're not going to do the right thing, then don't run for office again. Well, my particular alderman's got a burnout building, steel sitter that I talked about, and it's still sitting there right now with that burnout thing with his science sitting there. That's not politics. That's my seat. Let's stop it and let's do something.
Next is Shakira Woods, followed by Ms. Eric Urban.
Hello, Shakira Woods. I am newly elected Harvey Public Library trustee. I really didn't prepare anything because we say the same thing most of the time. It is not being heard. Y'all sit there, y'all don't care. Y'all send, I ain't going to say y'all, but you send your officers out there to harass people. You send your officers out here to do all your dirty deeds. And it's just, it's not right. You want to get this traffic court brought here, why? So you can keep the money that comes from all the people that you write tickets to, that you know you're going to make a mistake? Your officers don't follow the law. Because I had two, actually three, no trespassing signs on my property and they came anyway. Am I right, sir? Yeah. They don't follow the law. So what do we do in the case where you all don't follow the law? Do we take y'all to court? I mean, you did it as an alderman. You called the sheriff, they were sitting up in here for every little thing you swore, tell all of it. You even had certain citizens made police reports and filed lawsuits against certain alderpersons when you were alderman. But then, now that you have the alderman that you choose making police reports and your staff making police reports against all persons that are for the citizens. That are doing right by the citizens, that's doing what's right and what they were elected to do. So what do we do in those cases when you all break the law? We need those too, by y'all running down all these laws about we can't clap and how we get put out and felonies and misdemeanors and all of that. I mean, what do we do about y'all? And then you talk to us like you kids? That's disrespect. You allow your staff, your administration people to disrespect us, talk to us any type of way. What do we do? I need to know where's our love this at, so that do we know what to do?
Thank you. Next is Ms. Eric Urban, followed by Gliss James Watson.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ms. Eric Urban, former trustee at the Harvey Public Library for 2015 and 2021. I got about five or six concerns that I need to share with everybody. The city of Harvey received money from Robert Kelly to tear down abandoned houses. And I spoke with their office and asked, has any of that money been spent? And she's, and her office says that none of it has been spent to tear down anything. We got a house, 158 in Marshville, had a beat sign out there, "Building a better Harvey." Burnout, unsavable. The house has been there for like about five years. And that's not the only one. There's others all over the city. One is the holdup with spending the money. The money has been released. Robert Kelly's office says that you all have not spent it. You need to do the job. Take the money, use it for what it's for. Don't hold on it and try to convert it onto some other foreign project that nobody knows about what you're doing. That's number one. Number two, that shack, and that's what it is, a little garage shack on 154th and Rowan. Possibly about one block of the police department. I went to Home Depot and we did a write-up of how it would cost to build that concrete, wood, insulation, electrical piping, gas line, sewage, forty-three thousand dollars on Slav Foundation. And you said that the project costs, you've been three done for about 1.3 billion dollars if that's correct. What? Forty-three thousand dollars to build one of those subtracted from that leaves about 390,000 dollars for each of those three little garages that you built. What are you doing with the rest of them? Please don't ask anybody in the city of Harvey to believe that that costs 433,000 dollars. You're making yourself look bad and everybody that voted for it, you're making yourself look bad. Number three, 159th and Line, Ms. Patrick spoke only about the dog. I was driving down the street. They have a speed bump, they're slowed down. The dog ran up to my car, jumped up on my car, scratched my car up. You need to do something about that. This has been an ongoing problem. I know that the alderman knows about it. But since you don't live over there, it's all bad. And that's a big problem. That's not good alderman practices. The entire group of the 13,000 dollars that caused the firestorm back here on the 14th of August because people were asking about what the money was done with, we still want to know.
Thank you. And Gliss James Watson.
Good evening. Okay, so I I just want to speak out on this censorship of public comment. I'd like to read an excerpt of a document that was recently shared with me. In it, it states, "Contrary to the remarks that Ms. Watson made, the city does not remove people from meetings for engaging in protected speech or activity." Now, this statement is patently untrue. Anyone who witnessed Mr. Sinewski being totally forcibly removed from the city chambers on June 14th, 2024, or anyone who was in attendance at the July 8th, 2024 city council meeting, knows that an individual was removed and the chamber was cleared respectively on those two dates. At the July 8th meeting, after the meeting, the members of the public made direct, after a member of the public made direct and pointed comments toward the mayor and alderpersons, there was a smattering of clapping and audible comments, nothing more. Go back and watch the video and listen to the video, go back and watch and listen to the video that Mr. Sinewski recorded and posted on YouTube. There's no blood. There were no vocal outers nor any thunderous clapping. In fact, there's louder clapping and exclamations at my church than there was on the night of this egregious violation of freedom of speech. In my estimation, the real issue was that the people who were directly addressed, the mayor and certain alderpersons, they were, as the kids say, "But hurt." Your feelings got hurt. And I guarantee that if the comments made that evening were complimentary and glowing and everyone in the chamber stood on their feet to give a rallying ovation and shouts of approval, the chamber would not have been cleared. Hundred percent, it would not have been cleared. The only difference is that someone took offense to what was said. Therefore, it's easy to infer that the type of conduct that was considered disruptive is the conduct which is not complimentary or to the liking of the chamber, the chair or the council members. And that's a violation of free speech. According to the ACLU, banning or limiting speech because of its raised objections or government officials disagree is censorship. A person or group cannot be denied the ability to hold their, oh, sorry, that's not applicable. And then, the person who prohibits government officials from silencing speakers based on their point of view, that's called viewpoint discrimination.
Thank you. Next on the agenda. As a German, oh, there's a mayor company, but there is a next side of this, there's a German, here in the 10, motion two of the jury. There's a motion by the third, second, and final of the first. It was worth it, I'm a favorite, so I say hi. Those are both. Here, you know, we stand at the jury at 7:49. Thank you very much and have a great week.
As previously discussed, we're going to have the employees of the city police, they seem to have all the residents, attendees, and guests leave first.
This is, this I post online, it's the public. It's a public meeting, anybody can record for anything. For the public. I put it online. Yeah, I also run the Harvey historical site. Because this recording does not get released by the city. So otherwise, there would be no record of this meeting, which is illegal. Oh, oh, good. Here, I want to get that on camera.
I asked him, no.
Oh, good. Well, at least you can tell me on camera, but I wanted to get that. See, but at least you, at least you asked. That's good. That's good. At least you asked. Did he leave already? Did he leave? We don't, we don't have a problem with you guys. This is your boss. We don't like. Did that answer your question, though? That make sense? Yeah, it's unfortunate, but otherwise, they don't, there wouldn't be any recording of the public meeting. Thank you. I guess we're so dangerous as citizens that we have to leave first. Wow. Like we caused, like we caused the problems. Uh, she's, she's doing better, a lot better. Did Tyrone leave already?
No, they got to stay up there. All the people up in front got to stay.
Because Tyrone said-
Till the chamber clears out.
During the finance meeting, he said he would stay after to answer our questions.
Kobe is going, right there, so try to be watching her.
Right, I was going to say, that's why I'm not stopping to roll because, because you heard about Korean going after Kobe, right?
Yeah.
I was here when T- telling Tulani Smith spoke, talking about she was afraid of Kobe. I was here for that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure she gets out. Okay, Zoe's there too? Oh, I didn't even know that. Right, right, yeah. Have a good night. She's coming. Have a good evening. Good, good. I'm just waiting for, to make sure Kobe leaves without incident. Right, right, yeah. Yeah, we're just waiting for Kobe to make sure that she, she gets out. Kobe's not afraid to come out with us. She can come. Just send Kobe out first. Or just send Kobe out, but we're just waiting for her since she was, she was attacked by Korean.
Anybody out right now.
We're gonna give you all a lawful order, you all need to clear the parking lot. You all do not.
We just want to make sure Kobe gets out okay, the rest of them, we don't, we're not worried. Well, we know how, what happened last time with Korean pushing her. Right, I was. That's what I said. Cause remember, she was surrounded by police last time when Korean pushed her. So that didn't stop it, right? You can't, this is so crazy, like, we're like a small group of peaceful people.
I'm like, that's stupid, what you gotta do all that for? That's just dogs.
And look, look at, I'm getting this on camera, look, it's such a small group of peaceful citizens.
I, I try, I try to keep quiet, but it be the stupid stuff like that that make me, make me say what I say.
Well, I just can't believe all the officers that he has here instead of on the streets. And we have, what about our unsolved murders?
If y'all are right here, who getting the drug at?
Right.
Who getting the people that's holding on one hundred and fifty-fourth street?
Right.
I mean, I'm serious, y'all are all right here and they out there doing drugs and everything. Selling drugs, doing drugs, selling what? Y'all ain't, y'all, y'all right here, who more play?
I know.
I don't make no sense.
Yep.
It, it's sad.
It's sad when, when people, people's safety and lives are really threatened and we have all of our police force here.
And then, and then when I call for a police, they take twenty-five minutes to get there with y'all, cause y'all standing here.
Right.
That don't make no sense. But when they want to write tickets and tolls illegally, they write down at my, on my block.
Right, yep.
Crazy.
Well, at least Kobe, I know Kobe did, Kobe got to her car, right? She did, okay.
Oh, she had a car?
So that, that's good. And then there's the gentleman arrested me, but she shouldn't even be out here.
We got a clear hour lot that we pay for.
Right.
That's crazy.
We pay everybody's salary here. This is how you get, this is a police state of Harvey, Illinois. Can you give me a ride home? Oh, yeah, go ahead, Bernard, go ahead.
Bye-bye.
Look at this, it's crazy, absolutely crazy, crazy. Look at this craziness.
They're gonna do this from now on, every time they have a.
That's why I'm like, I'm not stopping the roll.
They're gonna force us out the parking lot.
Well, and we're not gonna do anything, it's just that last time.
No, they're gonna do this from now on, every time the meeting is over with, they're gonna have us leave first, then they're gonna come outside and tell us we got to leave the parking lot.
Right, absolutely ridiculous.
They're gonna do it every time now from now on.